I have it as 7:05. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic which stands one nation under liberty and justice for all. Okay. First item on the agenda is the review and approval of the minutes, but if the board will indulge me, I'd like to push that off towards the end and we can start by taking people right off.
Okay.
If that's okay? Okay, I'm getting nods of assent.
Yes.
First item of business is application of 11 Chapel Street LLC for property at 11 Chapel Street, map U2 lot 3, zone M2 for variance to allow proposed conversion of a 620 square foot of an accessory barn structure for commercial retail use pursuant to section 32-5, section 1, and 3 permit the expansion of non-conforming use and structure on a lot that does not meet current dimensional and use requirements and a variance to section 32-46, section 6, to allow parking within the front yard. With that, I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Chris Mulligan. I'm an attorney with Bozen and Associates in Portsmouth, and I'm the attorney for the applicant, 11 Chapel Street LLC. With me on the call tonight is Kiper Connell, the principal of 11 Chapel Street LLC, Eric Weinrib of Altus Engineering, who prepared the site plan that you have in your head, and also Chris Sigmont, who is our proposed tenant for the bike shop that we are proposing to locate in the space should the variances be granted. Just a bit of background, Mr. Connell acquired this property in 2017. If you're familiar with the property, it was in a fair amount of distress and he's done quite a lot of work to bring the property up to snuff, so to speak. The property itself consists of two single-family dwellings and what had been a very dilapidated and substandard accessory barn structure that has since been raised and actually moved 20 feet at the suggestion of the building inspector and placed in its current location. What we are here before you tonight for is to seek permission to cite an independent retail use on the first floor of that newly created structure that replaced the existing barn. The property itself, in its existing condition, is non-conforming in a number of respects, including as to lot area per dwelling, residential density, and both the front inside yard setbacks. It's also somewhat of a unique property in a couple of other respects. It has a Chapel Street address, although the only access is from Granite Street. It's a corner lot. The topography of the lot is such that you really can't access it any meaningful way from Granite Street, even though that's the street address, the main structure on the property. Front's Granite Street, has a porch that overlooks Granite Street, but you actually access it, excuse me, Chapel Street, but you actually access it from Granite Street. The other thing that is somewhat unique about this, and it's part of the relief we've requested, along Granite Street in front of the three-bedroom residence that abuts Granite Street, there have historically been stacked parking, three cars in a row, right before the stop sign as you get to the corner of Granite and Chapel Street. We're seeking relief to formalize that parking arrangement. That's relief under section 32-46. But I think it's important to note that we're not requesting any substantive change to what already exists on the ground. This is a parking configuration that, to my knowledge, has existed for many, many years. So there's really no change there. Part of the site improvements that we're proposing would be to square off the driveway into the property from Granite Street would significantly improve the functionality of that driveway and eliminate potential conflicts between vehicles entering and exiting the property and the existing parking that's stacked along the side of Granite Street. So with that said, the proposal is to convert the first story of the accessory dwelling into, which is approximately 620 square feet, into a retail facility. The specifics is that it would be a bike shop. We have Mr. Sigmont here, who is going to be the proprietor of the bike shop, should this be approved, and answer questions regarding the operation. But the property itself is on a lot that's just over 8,500 square feet. It's in the M2 zone, which is a, contemplates a mix of residential and commercial uses. We feel that this is a use that would be complementary to the neighboring and surrounding uses. As I've noted in the materials that I've seen, the immediate butter on Granite Street is the Stone School, which is entirely a non-residential use. Further down from that one door over is the Stone Church, again, an entirely non-residential use. And I think significantly, both of those uses are what I would consider to be somewhat complementary in terms of the likelihood of conflict with a business such as this, which would primarily be operating during the daytime. At least, the Stone Church seems to be a operation that primarily sees visitors and traffic in the evening hours, and the Stone School historically has very limited actual operations, you know, sort of a diminutous impact on the neighborhood. So we don't feel like this would promote or produce any type of overcrowding or conflict with what exists in the neighborhood today. So with that, by way of introduction, I would just like to give you these criteria that you need to find in order to grant the variances that we're requesting. And specifically, granting the requested variances will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the ordinance, nor will it be contrary to the public interest. These are two of the criteria you have to find, and under case law in New Hampshire, these are considered together. And what you need to consider here is whether or not granting the variances would result in a change to the essential characteristics of the neighborhood, or whether there would be any negative impact on the health, safety, and welfare of the public. Here, we don't feel that either of those would occur with what we're proposing. The character of the neighborhood would not be altered in any significant way. Again, there's a mix of residential and non-residential uses in the neighborhood as it stands, and the use, we feel, is complementary to existing uses that already exist in the neighborhood. The M1 zone, of which this is a part, is a zone that, according to your ordinance, is to provide for relatively high density and a mix of uses, and we feel that this accomplishes that intent.
Excuse me? Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to clarify. It's not the M1 zoning district. It's the M2 zoning district.
I apologize. Diane, you are correct. That was a typo.
I didn't mean to interrupt. I just, the requirements are considerably different. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
No, no, you are correct. Thank you. So the next criteria you need to focus on is whether substantial justice would be done by granting the variance. Whether or not substantial justice is done requires the board to balance the hardship on the applicant, should you require strict compliance with the ordinance against any gain to the public. In this case, we don't feel there's any benefit to the public in denying the variances that's not outweighed by the hardship on the owner. The existing exterior of the buildings will not change in any significant manner, and the site provides sufficient parking to accommodate the proposed commercial use. To the extent we need waivers of parking requirements, those are things we have to go before the planning board to request, and the planning is another level or layer of protection that the town and the public has to protect the public interest. So we think substantial justice would be done by granting the variances we've requested. The next item for your consideration is whether values of surrounding properties will be diminished by granting the variances. Here, we don't feel the variances will negatively affect surrounding properties in any way. With respect to the requested parking variance, this is already an existing parking condition with the parking along the Granite Street elevation of the property. That has existed historically for many years, and nothing is substantially changing there. With respect to the commercial use, again, there are a number of non-residential uses in the immediate vicinity, and the M2 zone provides for commercial, mixed commercial uses. So we feel that it's appropriate. Again, the exterior of the buildings will not be altered in any way, with the exception of signage, which would have to go through proper permitting, another level and layer of review that will protect the public. So approval from the planning board is also going to be required further protecting the public. So values of surrounding properties will not be diminished. Then finally, in order to grant a variance, you have to find that there are special conditions associated with the property that present an unnecessary hardship, such that strict compliance with the zoning ordinance prevents the proper enjoyment of the property. As I've discussed, this is a property that was in significant need of substantial upgrades. Mr. Connell has spent a fair and substantial amount of money renovating and rehabbing the buildings on the property, including removing the dilapidated and frankly dangerous barn structure that had existed and replacing it with the two-story structure that is currently there and what we're seeking relief to cite the bicycle shop in tonight. There, it's a corner lot that has a number of pre-existing non-conformities, including the pre-existing parking arrangement out on Granite Street, the fact that it is to block density for dwelling and as to siding, front yard setbacks, and the fact that it's a property that has a Chapel Street address but is in fact accessed exclusively through Granite Street, which is a much less intensely used right-of-way than Chapel Street. So those are all special conditions that distinguish it from other properties in the neighborhood, such that we believe there is no fair and substantial relationship between the purpose of the provisions of the ordinance and their application of this particular property. Commercial uses are contemplated within this zone. This is a very modest commercial use. It's just over 600 square feet. Parking requirement should be very minimal, and we can seek waivers if we need them from the planning board. And the use is a reasonable use. It's consistent with uses within the zone. As I've stated on a number of occasions, the immediate budding uses are not residential uses in their entirety. The lot has got a significant topography element to it. It slopes downhill as you head towards Main Street in a very significant manner. So the siding of the buildings on the lot is appropriate for the conditions on the lot, and the use is a reasonable use because it's otherwise permitted in this zone because the M2 zone contemplates a mix of residential and commercial uses. So with that, we've submitted plans. You have a proposed site plan, which identifies the structure with cross thatching, which is where the proposed bike shop would be cited. And we've also got floor plans, which show the open garage bay and front door and give you the dimensions of the space that would be used for this use. So if you have any questions, I think that's it for my presentation.
Do you have anything to add to that?
Well, first, I wanted to thank everybody for taking the time to meet. And we all have our lives, and you know, it's, everything's a challenge these days. So I want to thank every one of you individually. I'm, yeah, I have owned the property since 2017. I bought it and it was heavily distressed. I just remember the first time I went through it with Nancy Kingston. There were deer drying in the barn, you know, deer pelts and deer hides, and there was all kinds of stuff. And the yellow house, which I call the farmhouse, it was just, there wasn't a door inside. It was, you know, it just kind of, I would say for, it's almost like squat, you know? And I took a lot of pride in what I've done. And I've got great tenants. Everybody's very happy. I've had, since 2017, I've had three turnovers on the yellow house and no turnover on the blue house. Just great people. Everybody seems to be positive in the neighborhood. And I've had a good rapport with everybody at the Stone Church, including Mr. Hoffman, who's been resource, also very positive. So yeah, I'm just trying to give you a little story. I want to make the town better. I love Newmarket. I've grown up here. Grew up in Portsmouth and Rye. Both my parents were entrepreneurs. My father was in the restaurant business and my mother was a professional photographer, bit of a socialite, but it's how I know Brad, Brad Laun there. But yeah, that's all. Nothing, nothing to add other than who I am. Maybe you don't know who I am, but hopefully now you do.
Well, with the presentations from the owner being made, I'll open this up to public comment. If there's anyone out there that has something to say about this proposal, now's your time to speak. If you do choose to speak, just state your name and address for the record, please. It's one of the reasons I hate Zoom meetings. I can't tell who wants to say what where.
Hi, my name is Karen Gorski, and I just bought 19 Spring Street, and my garage will be across the street from this proposed location.
Okay.
My question would be regarding parking, since my two-car garage is on Granite Street. If there was not parking, what would the feasibility be if there was no parking that somebody would park in my space to get to this bike shop?
Did you understand what she was saying? Did the question, did everybody hear?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Do you have a response to that, or?
Mr. Chair, I guess, I guess I would respond, again, Chris Mulligan for the applicant. It's clearly not our intent to use parking from, that belongs to 19 Spring Street for the benefit of this project. What is that there, and you can see this on the plans, there are a number of parking spaces on the site that we've engineered, and I've got Eric Weinrib here who can discuss those if that's necessary. But we also believe that there's an opportunity, if it's necessary, and we don't know that it is at this point, if there is conflict, we think that we might be able to work something out for overflow parking with either the Stone School or the Stone Church, or both, if it gets to that. I'm not, you know, personally, I don't believe that we're going to be witnessing a situation where we're in a parking crunch because the size of what we're proposing is relatively modest, just over 600 square feet. It's not going to accommodate, you know, an influx, a massive influx of patrons at any given time. a massive influx of patrons at any given time. But it also, you know, I would point out that I think to some extent, the the area is pedestrian friendly. I mean, you can access Granite Street through the the stairs to the Stone Church from Church Street and, you know, people can walk from Main Street. Again, we think that this is a relatively benign and complimentary use for this neighborhood. So we don't anticipate there being any conflict. We certainly don't intend to be using 19 Spring Street, you know, for our own personal use, of course, but we don't, we don't foresee any conflict there.
If I can add, this Eric Weinrib with Altus Engineering, I prepared the site plan. And I would just like to add that the business use complements the two residential uses and most likely when people are at the business, it's when the residents are not home. So that provides more parking on spaces than, you know, for the business use. But like Chris said, likelihood is that I we will not, you know, use all of those spaces. Additionally, I just don't foresee many people, just general nature of people, I think, are not going to pull up to a property, realize there's not parking and park on someone else's property and someone else's driveway. I just don't see that happening. They're gonna go other place to park and walk there or come back at a different time. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any input on this proposal?
I might just add something quick. Christopher Zigvont, the proposed tenant. One thing I would like to point out because it is a small boutique bicycle shop. One thing we need just to consider for traffic is a reasonable number of those people that would be coming, would be coming by bicycle, not by car, and they take up a lot less space. So we'll have a bike rack for them to park their bike in and that we hope and expect to see a lot of the people that would visit us visit us by bike.
Is there any more comment from the public? Seeing none, we'll close the public comments section and open it up to discussion amongst the members. I guess the, I guess I'll start. The big concern I've got how this proposal has got us buying into the fact that we're giving him three parking spaces on Granite Street. Realize it's been that way for a while, but it's town property and I don't think this board has the authority to grant that. That's something that they should be taking up with town council. You know, I know they've been parking there for years, but if, you know, if we let that happen, then every other parcel in town, they can claim their frontage as open parking, counted as part of the density, the allowable parking. And I don't think that's a precedent we want to set. Wayne, go for it.
Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Well, my concern was exactly the same, Bob. I didn't know exactly how that would work either. How many parking spaces are required in this, Diane?
You're muted, Diane.
Diane?
You're muted.
Okay. Um. We have two residential units that are there currently and residential units as a base require two spots per unit. So there's four there. The, we have a standard for business parking for retail of one parking space per 250 square feet. And I worked the figures with the applicant a while ago. My memory's a little foggy on it and I haven't visited the site plan, but the park, there's enough room, I think, probably for three parking spaces on site.
He's got five on site.
In addition to what's there for the residential.
No, they're on-site. He's got five parking spaces.
So he needs four for the residential and he needs one space per 200 square feet. However, this is the M2 zone and the M2 zone parking is handled differently than in, say, the business zone where there's a prescribed standard. And there is flexibility that's provided for shared parking. There's also flexibility for parking on off-site, i.e. if it's you get so many points so forth. So these are things that the planning board as part of their review of the parking plan will discuss and if necessary, as Mr. Weinberg Weinrub indicated, there could be some varying, not variances, but exceptions granted by the planning board, provided it meets certain conditions. That's in their purview. If I answer your questions, 620.
So I came up with nine spaces, including the three out in the street. Am I wrong? One, two, three, one, five, seven, eight, nine.
Okay. I got eight.
Now, I think this, the handicap, is that two spaces or one?
Just one parking space, but that has to be, you know, provided with an access aisle and that sort of thing.
Okay, all right. So there's eight spaces.
Mr. Chair, can I make a suggestion? Because I think your concern is a very valid one and, you know, when we originally were looking at this application, it wasn't clear to me that it was appropriate for us to even for that variance relief because of precisely what you honed in on. The spaces that we're looking, that we're asking for a variance for are outside of the boundary of our property. Given what Ms. Hardy has explained that we have enough spaces for either the residential use or the proposed commercial use, not at the same time, but that we can seek some type of relief or waiver from the planning board. I would suggest that if you're, if you're concerned about setting that type of precedent, it's a valid concern, we would withdraw the parking variance request and just roll with the use request.
I was hoping someone would say something like that. It's greatly appreciated. The complimentary parking spaces, I know exactly how that works in a residential, in this type of neighborhood. People go out to work during the day and the parking spaces are open for the businesses. So it's worked well in several instances. I've seen like in Exeter and some places in Portsmouth. So I would have no problem with that, that concept.
So we pass, basically we're passing it on to the plan slash town council to make that decision.
Not the town council, the planning board.
Okay.
I mean.
The town council would have to wait on branding use of public property like that. That's
Already been, Bob, it's been used for the last 30 years.
Yeah, so.
There might be some prescriptive rights associated with that. And can regulate parking on any town street. I guess there's a question too of the width of the street. Is it a standard street? Is it a 50-foot right-of-way? So there's a lot of questions that come up in assessing that. But, and we have lots of areas where people park on the town road out in front of their property. It's and it's, it's not something that we go to the town council and specifically ask approval for. It's it's in the town's parking codes that it's restricted. That's one thing. And I don't believe that those parking spaces are restricted by the town's parking code.
I, can I say something? I agree with everything you just said. But I still think that Bob's right, that we shouldn't set a precedence here by acting on it. And I'm glad he went to withdraw that. I don't have any problem with anything else. I did have a problem.
In this.
I think that's a great solution to the problem, I think, as the chairman has pointed out. And I don't have that idea at all. I just think that there's some questions that need to be looked at and at the planning board level to establish are those legitimate spaces? Does the town regulate them? Does the town own them? Is it, are they on-town property? And we don't really know that.
Survey they are on-town property.
Okay, but they've been using it for the last 30 years. The town can allow that. And the town has not restricted it. So I don't understand. I mean, we can clarify it with the town highway safety committee if you'd like to. I mean, we can do that.
No, I mean, the M2 zone is clear that in item six is that onsite parking shall not be allowed between the front of the property, property, primary structure and the street. Well, here there is no space between the primary structure and the street. It is the street. So I get the solution Mr. Mulligan came up with works if this, I'm in favor of letting it proceed at this point with that caveat, but I think it's a great use of the property. I commend Mr. Connell, Connell for a section of urban blight and I guess I'd like to move forward with it.
I have one other thing.
Bob?
Go ahead.
And I wasn't going to bring this up, but when I was there, I visited on Saturday and this is in response to the Butters' concern about parking. And I don't, I agree with everything. I don't think anybody will be using her garage space parking for abuse that. When I was there on Saturday, I did notice there was a car parked. I was there about oh, maybe nine o'clock in the morning, 10 o'clock. There was a car and there's no way that you could make it into the entrance there. And I would request that for your neighbor across the street to make her feel better, that you police somehow, don't ask me how you're going to police it, but that you don't block that entranceway with parking now.
I had to represent a seller in Portsmouth in front of the planning board and it took us a whole year. It was so painful.
Who?
Please.
I don't know who that was.
Penny, could you identify yourself, please? It was Penny.
Yeah, it was. Penny, could you identify yourself, please?
Yes, I'm sorry. That was me by mistake.
Okay. Can you give us your name and address for the record?
Absolutely. Penny Wood.
Okay.
29 Raider, R-A-E-D-E-R Drive in Stratton, New Hampshire.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Oh, I guess if they could address that, I think their neighbors would feel better. That's all.
I think that's, that's a reasonable request. I don't foresee that being any problem for Mr. Connell.
Other than that, I think it's a great use. I notice I think you'd be in modest on the renovations. I noticed there's a new foundation under that barn. I mean, there's quite a bit of expense spent there and I think everything is moving at a good pace and I don't have a problem with the whole concept.
Any other members of the board want to speak up?
I'd be, I'd be glad to. I agree with, with all, all the points of spirit and the ten of the ordinance, sustainable justice, the values of surrounding properties, hardship and reasonable use. I clicked them all off as I went through the, through the view. Not to be a joiner, but I also went up there and parking was the first thing I saw, but it seems like it's over the planning board's.
I don't have anything additional to add. Pointed it, it's been brought up already.
No, me neither, Bob. I, I'm going to support granting the variance. I think Attorney Mulligan put together a nice, nice proposal and I appreciate that. So, so thank you. The Wayne's right. The applicant has done a lot of good work up there. I'm happy to support it. I did have concerns about the parking as well, but, and they were different than what's been discussed here, but in light of the fact that Attorney Mulligan has drawn that particular request, their mood anyway. So I think I'm happy to support the, the application and vote in favor of granting the variance.
Okay. Willing to accept a motion? So we can vote on this? I'll take a stab at this if nobody else will. I'll make a motion that we grant the variance to sections 32-5, section one and three that permit the expanded, expansion of a non-conforming use and structure on a lot that does not meet current directional and use requirements and that we use the findings herein as our findings of fact and that as a, as a special condition also that we ask that the property owner see what he can do to minimize the impact on parking on the budding property property owners.
I second the motion.
Who is that?
Al.
Al, Al seconded the motion. All those in favor, we got to do a roll call vote. Wayne?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Eve?
I vote aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And I vote aye. You have, you have the variance. Thank you for putting.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you for putting together a good package.
Oh, you're very welcome. Thank you.
Very much.
All right. All right, the next, next one is a, an application for appeal of an administrative decision from Wayne Willett Willett Family Trust concerning clarification of a 2005 zoning board decision and administrative decision of Diane Hardy, the zoning administrator dated January 27, 2001 regarding a 5,000 square foot vacant lot at 2123 Ham Street Extension. U2 lot 310 in Zone R2. Is anyone here from the Willett Trust, the Willett family?
Mr. Chairman, William Willett is with me here in the room and I'm going to speak for him if that's okay.
Absolutely.
All right. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Brad Laun. I represent the Willett-Curple Family Trust that owns this property. It took us 15 years, but we're back here for the purpose of clarifying the decision from December of '05. You have in your packet the letter from Diane Hardy, which I, which I thank her for. It lays out the history of the property and the procedural history of this case. Back in December of '05, the, this board, different members, but this board made a finding that the 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 this was a lot. They were two separate lots. The twenty-one twenty-three Ham Street Extension Lot is a duplex. And the lot adjacent to it is about fifty-one hundred square feet. It's a uh it's an empty lot. And uh we uh the 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 ZBA uh in oh five found that they were two record. Now, that finding that there were two lots of record uh necessarily means that the fifty-one hundred square foot lot is a a nonconforming grandfather lot of record. Now, I'm gonna just talk for a minute about those what those terms are. I'm sure you've all heard them before. Uh but nonconforming simply means that it doesn't comply with the current lot size requirement under the current zoning ordinance. Grandfather means that it is exempted from the uh uh certain provisions of the ordinance and it comes with vest rights. Uh that's what grandfathered means. If it's a lot of record, and it is, and the ZBA has already found that it existed prior to the enactment of the ordinance, so it's a lot of record. Then it is grandfathered, and there are vested rights that come with that. Uh the the reason why we're back here uh tonight, Mr. Chairman, is to clarify the decision that was issued in oh five. Now, uh the the minutes of the meeting were uh a little bit sketchy, but the the board found that there were two separate buildable lots of uh two separate lots of record. Uh but as Diane Hardy says uh the issue of buildability was clearly stated uh by by me. That was clearly requested. It was not fully discussed, is what she says in her letter, and the decision was inconclusive and should be clarified. So that's why we're back here is to clarify uh that decision in December of oh five. The buildable issue is this, that under New Hampshire law, a uh an existing lot of record is buildable, and uh the 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 cases in nineteen seventy-six New Hampshire Supreme Court case Bat Batcock, B A T T C O C K versus Town of Ride. It stands for the proposition that a lot of record is buildable, and that what that does not mean is that you uh it doesn't mean that you automatically get a variance or that you can uh uh build something that's not in compliance with the ordinance. Uh what it does mean is that a structure can be built on the lot. Uh and uh but as long as it is within the uh the uh provisions of the existing ordinance, and that's uh that's why we're here. My client doesn't have any present intention of building on the lot. He may be interested in selling it. Uh but uh he wants to by this decision from oh five uh so that the board can confirm that this is a a buildable lot. That's why we're here. Uh this uh this lot is in a neighborhood where there are a number of nonconforming lots and structures. Uh if the if the board agrees that this is buildable, and if ultimately there's a structure built on this lot, uh it would be uh it's got town water and sewer. It's what I would call an infill development. Uh was it within walking distance of town? Uh it's uh something that could be relatively affordable as opposed to a structure that's uh built on the half acre minimum lot size. Uh so we we are here just for the purpose of clarifying that this is a buildable lot. Uh that's that's all we're looking for. I think under New Hampshire law, it is a buildable lot. I believe that's what the law is. That's what we're asking the the board to find. Uh that is, the board already having found that it is a lot of record. And I think what necessarily follows from that is that it is nonconforming. Uh and uh that it is grandfathered with existing vested rights to build in accordance with the zoning ordinance. Thank you.
With this presentation being made, if I I'd like to open it up real quick to the public, if there's anybody that wishes to speak on this right now, uh now's your opportunity. Is there anyone out there that like to comment on this? Well, I don't see anybody beating the doors down, so with that, I'm gonna close the public comments section. And uh we'll open up to discussion amongst the board members. Come on, guys. I know you got opinions.
I'll I'll take a shot. Um I went through the chronologically through the through the notes and if I were, and I am, just reading as as an outsider, not being involved in it. It was clear in the notification that the request was for uh two buildable lots. It was it was stated so in the notice. My suspicions are that it was also stated in the but then in the butter's notices. Because again, that was the the statement regarding two lots in buildable lots. The I I was questioning, I went through the notes of the uh of the meeting as well, and I think Diane was concerned that from the notes, it wasn't clearly explained or deliberated. I'm sorry, deliberated enough. And that's a a concern that she expressed. Um I thought um after reading the notes and listening to Brad's uh explanation about the issues involved, that it was pretty clearly explained. He talked uh about the two buildable lot issue. He talked about the what he mentioned a moment ago, moment ago, and that was the Babcock versus the Tower of Rye. So I didn't I didn't uh come to the same conclusion that Diane did, that it wasn't fully deliberated based on the notes. And um it it the other comment I would make is we all know that um notes are just notes. They're not comprehensive discussions about about the actual um discussions that went on. So it's hard to see from that notes, from those notes, other than the ones presented by the by Brad, that there wasn't full discussion. So I I have a a bit of a difficult time agreeing that um from what I could see that it wasn't full.
Anyone else? Well, in 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 my opinion, the fact that they went through this effort person doesn't go through the effort to clarify it was combined to break it out into two lots unless they had intentions of doing something with it, conveying the land as a buildable lot. I I don't see any other any other purpose for doing that. Um I went through a similar experience in in Exeter, but it was on a uh almost two-hundred-year-old lot that the church had acquired. And uh the planet, the uh zoning administrator there said I had to go through a uh subdivision plan to break it out. But I had a clearly described deed. I could find three of the four points, couldn't find the fourth point, but brought it to the zoning board, and we overturned the administrator's decision. This is, in my opinion, this is something that was done in the seventies to for the convenience of of tax assessors and the like. And um in 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 my opinion, there there are two lots there. They were subject to the rules and regulations at the time those lots were formed. So if they were buildable lots then, they're buildable lots now. Any any more discussion?
I'll put my two cents in. Um I'm looking at the sketch here, and it clearly the side setbacks. And if he wants a thirty by forty-five house put on there, I I don't understand why it's not a buildable lot, so I would say it's a buildable lot. And I have no problem. It was clear clear in in two thousand and five that they determined that it was two separate lots. I my parents had a had parcel that I live on now that was described in several parcels that indeed from the sixties. And so I've seen, and that went back to the early teens of nineteen seventeen, and so I've seen that before. I've had, so I don't think there's any question about that. Not that that's the question involved here, but I I I feel that it's a buildable lot.
Okay, what we wanted.
May I add something?
Yes, please.
Uh we, in the letter from Diane Hardy, she suggested that as a condition of anything the board does, that we provide a survey. We've already provided the survey, and it is in that packet, okay? Um and we, the the diagram that was provided in the survey just shows a hypothetical structure that could be built on the property and meet the setbacks. We're we're not asking for a variance from any of those setbacks at all. Um the the decision from December of oh five, I just would finally say at least according to the minutes. And I was there at the meeting that night. I remember it. We were back in the days when we did this in person. And there was deliberation about this, and uh the the board found uh that that there were two lots. Uh we didn't, uh at the time, we didn't think much of of the of the decision. We just assumed buildable lots, and it wasn't until just recently we found out that was an issue at all. But part of the decision was to let the tax, to let the tax office know, let the assessor know that the the property should be separated and taxed separately, uh and that was never done. So it's it's been taxed as one lot, and so there was no follow-up on this where there should have been.
That happens from time to time. Well, if there's no further discussion on the board's part, I'll entertain a motion.
Trying to get the I'm administratively challenged here. I'm trying to find the the proper you gotta help me with it.
All right.
Can I suggest something, Mr.?
Absolutely, Diane.
You know, what we're doing here is seeking a clarification. So basically, just this is to confirm the intent of the application dating back to whatever eight thousand and five, which determine whether this was a buildable lot of record. And I think what I'm hearing from everyone is yes, that was what the intent was. So it's just a clarification. So keep it, I would just keep it simple, and I just wanted to also mention that right under current zoning, we're talking about a single-family house, not a multi-family building, and I just want that to be clear. We had realtors calling saying, oh, can I put three or four units out there? I'm like, no. So anyway, but the the intent was that it would be approved for a single-family home because that's what was allowed in that zone um at the time. You're doing great.
Gotta love these volunteer boards.
I know.
The decision of, what was the date? May twenty-fifth, was it? Two thousand and five or May two thousand and twenty-five? That the intent of the decision was to allow the tenants of this separate lot, five thousand square foot lot for construction of a single-family home.
And I think it was, Diane, I think it was December twelfth, two thousand and five.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Yep.
So we let let's let's have that stand as the motion. All those in fa, oh, excuse me. Uh Wayne, are you in favor?
Yes, I am.
Steve?
Excuse me. I vote aye.
James, are you still with us? I saw you pop up. Al, are you in favor?
I vote aye.
Um and I'll vote aye, and we'll show uh James is temporarily absent. I think his sausage was burning or something.
And and I just make the comment. Thanks so much. I think I think your your summary was really helpful.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I I think the whole intent was to make it a buildable lot, and it should have been clear in the first. All right. Moving on, I lost my notes now.
Thank you.
All right, item three on the agenda, item C on the agenda. Application of Elliot and Donna Reed at One Oak Knoll Drive, New Market, New Hampshire. Tax map U one lot one dash twenty-three, R two zone for special exception for an accessory dwelling unit, ADU, from section two thirty-four of the New Market zoning ordinance. Hello? Uh Donna or Elliot, you're
Um I'm Donna Reed, and
We're getting
We're having some echo problems here.
In the Grand Canyon, Bob. I I can't I can't hear that very well.
We're taking care of it as we speak.
And you're muted, Elliot. You're you're muted, Elliot.
That's fine.
Okay, I think we're all set now.
Yep, go ahead. Make your presentation.
Um we're seeking permission to build an addition, and you call an accessory dwelling on our house at One Oak Knoll. Um uh we would like, uh we would move into the addition. And um our son, who grew up in this house, would move into the current dwelling with his um two daughters, young daughters, and his wife.
Okay.
I hope everybody had a chance to look at it. It's pretty self-explanatory. There was some
And we got we got the addition of the uh driveway layout.
Okay, good. Then that's, I thought that was pretty much
So for uh an accessory apartment, there are eight conditions. Then the accessory apartment shall be a minimum of three hundred square feet and a maximum of one thousand square feet of finished living area. The accessory apartment shall be uh either be apartment without a separate bedroom or a one-bedroom or two-bedroom apartment. One of the dwelling units must be owner-occupied. There shall be a minimum of two parking spaces for each dwelling unit. A parking s- a parking space shall be defined as a rectangular space, nine feet by eighteen feet. Parking spaces shall be permitted within the setbacks if the location is over fifty feet from an abutting dwelling unit. No exterior changes shall be made unless they maintain the aesthetic continuity of the accessory unit with the principal dwelling unit as a single-family dwelling. Adequate water and sewer disposals shall be provided if town water and sewer service. The tie in fee shall be made made. Granting the special exception would be consistent with. Section thirty two dash five one B. An interior door shall be provided between the principal dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit. However, shall not be required to remain to remain locked.
We have all, I believe we have all those conditions covered. Our, we have a new roof and fairly new siding, so it's going to be very easy to match up the exterior. At the like the current house that we live in. It's and both, of course, are one story and it will be an L shape.
Plans are very thorough. Okay, I'm gonna open it up right now to public comment. Is there anyone out there from the in a butter or from the public that would like to speak to this?
I see our neighbor Lee. Hi, Lee.
I'm their backyard neighbor.
And if you, Lee, if you, I can bring you over a set of plans if you wanna look at the detail. Be happy to bring those over tomorrow.
That that would be great, actually. I don't have any objection as long as it meets all the setbacks. And it does, I assume.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, I I remember that, yes. So, you know, as long as we're. Following the rules, I I don't think it should be a problem.
If you go to the town's website, the zoning board website on the agenda section. You can download all the documents that we're looking at. Website.
Oh, really?
But I'll be kind, Lee. I'll just bring you over a copy. And I see Paula Smart is on there as well and Paula, I can bring something over to you if you'd like to look at it as well.
Thank you, Donna. I've actually seen the plans and.
Oh, great.
We don't think there's any objections to anything and like Lee says, once if everything's within its setbacks, it shouldn't be an issue.
Well, thank you.
So where would I find that that meeting? I'm in the website.
Meeting today, today's address and you've got to slide the bar all the way over because it's. The the download section's a little hidden.
I'm a newbie, so.
I've had to fight it a few times too, so.
I'll bring it to you tomorrow, Lee.
Which you said it's under not under minutes, it's under.
Go to the agenda. And that will bring up our online.
So upcoming meetings, I see zoning board of adjustment. That's this meeting, right? And then agendas. Oh, I see.
The agenda. On the application of Elliot and Donna Reed. And that will bring up all the materials that were submitted.
You've got to slide it further over to the right because the first one just gives you the agenda. The next one gives you all the downloads. You gotta slide the you gotta you gotta scroll all the way over to the right.
Trying to do this on iPads.
I had problems with the first few times I did it too.
I see the agenda.
Scroll it over just a little bit more.
To the right.
And it there's a it's a it's a these are all PDF documents, so.
Oh, I see. Oh, oh.
Did you click on the item on the agenda? Cause it's interactive. You click on it, brings you to all the documentation.
Oh, there we go. Plot map.
There you go.
Oh, there it is. I see it.
I have a question. Paula Smart, speaking twenty seven Riverbend Road. On on the original site plan. Put a second driveway. And my understanding is maybe that driveway is not going to be in there now.
No, no, we we were looking at different ways of having parking and. I've decided the best way is basically expand the.
It looks like your parking is gonna be like off to the side of your existing existing driveway.
Yeah, just make it wider like.
You you do realize that. You can't alter, you you really can't alter your driveway cut itself. Once you get onto the parcel, you can do a little bit more, but. You gotta go through public works. If you're gonna do anything to where it it ties into the roadway, you gotta get a driveway permit.
We wouldn't increase like where it goes across the culvert, just when you come in, then it would widen out. Past the culvert. Does that make sense?
And we wouldn't respect the road frontage at all.
So, all right, is there anyone else out there that would like to comment on this? That being said, I'm gonna close the public. Public comment section and open up for discussion amongst the board members.
So Bob, I've lost it for about five to seven minutes. I thought it was bad internet connection. I had to restart my computer, so. I'm going to unless there is something big that I missed, I'm gonna stay quiet for a minute or so.
Okay. I think the plans are pretty self explanatory.
So there wasn't any further big stuff that I missed?
With which one?
This 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 one we're talking about right now.
No.
Okay, perfect.
Nothing that wasn't in the in the written record.
Excellent. Thank you.
Pretty cut and dry, Bob. The and now maybe is a good time to remind people on this call and. And outside of this call, if they're viewing elsewhere, that it's special exceptions. If the conditions are met. The law is clear. The board has to grant that. We have very little discretion. The board has to grant. The application for the special exception that's codified in New Hampshire case law. That Shell Oil versus Manchester, one oh one, New Hampshire, page seventy six. The decision that. Known to at least members of this board, so. You know. Willing to listen to discussion from others, but. There isn't any. Willing to make a motion to approve. The application. And grant the special exception for an accessory dwelling unit. From section two thirty four of the New Market zoning ordinance.
I second that.
Okay, we have motion and second from Steve and and second by Wayne. That being said, let's take a roll call vote. Wayne. Steve.
I.
James.
I.
Al. If you nodding your head, yes, okay. And I'll vote yes. So you have it.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you also very much for taking time out of your life to help us.
Good to see you, Lee.
Good to see you. Wait sometime.
Been a long time since we served on the waterboard together.
Oh, my goodness, that is a long time. Oh, my gosh. Of course, I'm looking at Trina's name and oh, my goodness. Well. Thank you.
Very good. With that being said, the next order of business is. Minutes. From the last meeting. We're all set.
And Donna.
All right. Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes?
Yes.
Any comments? I can't seem to find mine. I thought I had them.
Who to approve the minutes of? January eleventh twenty one twenty one.
All right. I have a motion to approve the minutes. We gotta take a roll call vote. Wayne.
I.
James.
I was gonna say, do we need a second or no?
We did get one, didn't we?
Yes, for me.
Oh, sorry. I missed it.
James.
Yes, I.
Al.
I.
Steve.
I vote the I.
I unanimous eyes. Very good. I think we're we're good to go on that. Wayne, did you wanna get into the breezeway discussion?
What?
Did you wanna get into the breezeway discussion?
The breezeway.
Let's let's adjourn.
You've left us with great mystery.
Our our first, our first, our first hearing.
I'll maybe move to adjourn so we can continue.
Yeah. All those in favor of the journey?
I.
I.
James.
I, yeah.
Wayne, I.
I.
Very good. So that's done. Till next time, Diane. We're here.
Okay, very good. Thank you, everyone.